Okay, we will call this meeting through order at 6:32 PM. I have a roll call for the establishment of the forum, please.
Mike Weiner?
Here.
Cindy, here.
Erin Mashkey?
Here.
James Cartman?
Here.
Mary Beth Scholl?
Here.
Do I say Isaiah's name yet?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't have to.
I'm here.
I have proof of posting, let's please stamp the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal to his law, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I would...
It's your fault if it doesn't work.
Second.
Alright, questions, comments? Are you done? Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I will guess as well. We're on to approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes from January 13th of 2020.
Second.
Changes? Questions? Alright, Erin Dunn, Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Erin? Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
On to 2.2, approval of the special meeting for the purpose of verification of schoolwork candidates and drawing blocks for April 7th of 2020, election minutes from January 14th of 2020.
Second.
Question?
I know.
Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Nobody else, well, you probably can play in the room. Okay, so we're on to 4.1, middle high school staff reporting their truth.
Yes, and let's go up to the chairs for any other visitors. Jamie, whenever you're ready, you can take it away.
Alright, so I kind of apologize ahead of time because it is a little confusing and whatnot with our curriculum, so for following with the feedback and stuff that might be a little confusing, but if you have questions, just shout them out. So, um, our math curriculum that was passed is based off of those six things that are ingrained, so those you're gonna see come up throughout the little presentation here. And then I also took, two weeks ago, some feedback from the kids, so I gave them some questionnaires and I just wanted their complete honest opinion on the curriculum and then some of the aspects of it. So you'll see quotes kind of within the presentation. So, big thing is, they like it because it's a mix of a whole bunch of different kinds of math. So it's not just algebra, it's not just geometry, but it's mixing them together and it's more leveled out. Um, so they like learning about a lot of different things, doing different activities, not just the same thing every single day, and they find it a little bit more interesting. Um, growth mindset is basically the huge thing for the curriculum, is basically bringing in those kids and making sure that they, um, are with that growth mindset, the power of yet, all that kind of stuff, because that's gonna make them grow in the curriculum greatly. A typical day, so a typical day, we start with a warm-up. Um, that's usually gonna last a couple minutes as they walk in through the door. This warm-up is going to be questions that they're going to see coming up on tests, questions that they had problems with on their worksheets, that as they came in and I corrected them, I saw that they struggled with, so then I will bring them up as like a warm-up for the next day or the following couple days or whatever else. Then we move into mental math. Mental math, I'll explain in a minute what that is, but it's just basically your very, very quick times, multiplication, addition, subtraction, percents, finding change from a $10 bill, like all those kinds of things. Um, slots, I'll explain that, notes, worksheets, so these right here are our main four things that we do every single day, so it does require a lot of transitions and it requires your kids to be on board and ready to go from one thing to the next. And that's just basic training, like from day one. Um, investigations, non-routine problems and CER problems, I'll talk about those, but those are kind of, happen, you know, every month, they're so, so they don't happen on a daily basis. Here's an example of a warm-up that I would have for students, this was actually today's warm-up. So, they are working on three topics at once and they are spiraling. So, one topic will show up for one day, but then maybe later that day we'll start into a second topic, and then the next day a third topic, but then we bring back the first topic and then they just kind of spiral all together. Here's another example of a warm-up, after I realized how many kids do not understand the deck of cards and probability with it and all that, so I brought that to the warm-up to just go over those kinds of things, and how many kids don't understand what a face card is and stuff like that. Then, as you can see up here, you've got your typical geometry type problems, but they're showing up in Math 1. So, these are like your lower level geometry problems that we're now already hitting by first semester of Math 1 curriculum at freshman, typical level. These are working on numeracy, so, you know, your typical second grade, third grade math class, but they come back every single day. So, we will do two minutes of adding, so I'll set a timer and we'll work up for two minutes and I'll say, "Ready, go!", and they'll go for two minutes as fast as they can through the sheet, um, and then we'll do that for like five, six days in a row. Hopefully, they better their score every single time, and then we'll move on to something else. So, like, a big thing before Thanksgiving was finding percents, so like kids could go shopping on Black Friday and then find percents off of things. And a lot of them actually came back and were like, "Oh my gosh, I actually used it", which you don't always see. So, then we do slots, which I will say from the feedback, it probably wasn't the most exciting thing for them to do, but that told me as a teacher that this new curriculum is working because those slots are our old curriculum. They are those really routine problems that solve an equation, solve an equation, solve an equation, solve an equation, they get bored of it. They're good at it, but they get bored of it. So we only do it for like 10, 15 minutes, put it away, work on something else. Bring it back the next day or bring it back three days later, work on it again for five, 10 minutes, put it away. Um, notes, not really a favorite, but we got, we have to do them. We only do them for about 10 minutes a day and we don't do them every day. Um, the big thing that is very different with this new curriculum is you guys are going to be, or they're gonna be given probably 10 minutes of notes on a topic, but they don't use it that day. So, it'll be like two or three or four days down the road, all of a sudden they'll get an investigation in front of them and they have no idea really how to go about it other than to read the directions, kind of follow through, use the notes that I provided them a few days prior, and then they start to figure some things out, and then we take some more notes on it, and then they get a worksheet and then it's like, "Come on, now it's real, we're gonna start learning it" and go from there. I got the comment, we introduce topics before we start to use them. Teaching for 13 years, I don't think that pre-teaching is horrible. So, I don't know if I would call that really a downfall, but... Um, we're able to make connections in this time, so like we have some days where we do mind maps, where it'll be a topic and then I'll say, "Okay, on this topic, we worked on this, and we worked on this, and we worked on this", and this is how they're all connected. So, those go in with notes kind of thing. Um, if you're not confused yet, so, here's probably the first, what is that? Eight days of semester two. So, when I say we get to worksheet time, that first day we're working on probability and that's our main worksheet, I'll show you what those look like real quick in a second. Then the next day we do parallel lines, a worksheet on that. The following day, they work on an investigation, which means they haven't really learned too much about the topic yet and they're exploring it. Then the fourth day, we go back to parallel lines, it's gonna be a similar worksheet to what they've seen. They've already gotten it back and it's been corrected and they've gotten feedback on it, they've seen the ones they've gotten wrong, so now, they can fix those types or they know which ones to ask in class before they leave. Then, you guys can keep reading, they're color coordinated, so this is kind of how they spiral back through. Now, if you think a kid who's absent for two days in a row, typically, they're gonna miss the same topic, not with our curriculum. So, you may miss day one of parallel lines, but then this day, it probably has the warm-up of parallel lines because I know what kids have struggled on. I can start them in on this, they go back and fix this, then they even get feedback before they get their second sheet. So, absences, this really helps for it too. Let me back out of this just real quick. So, worksheets. Okay, this is one of the downfalls. It's, the organization of it is all over the place until you've done it for about a semester. So, it does take quite a bit of getting used to where everything is and, because it's all worksheet-based, no books, no nothing. So, we've got parallel line topic, this was their investigation, where they use protractors, they use notes that I've provided them, things like that. Then they go into worksheet one, where they're exploring things and using their notes and the investigation, and then it gets down to, you know, a little bit more difficult problems. And those are the three that they're probably gonna struggle with. So then I bring those for a warm-up the following day or the day after that. And then worksheet two, you've got very similar things going on, and again, more tougher problems and they take a little bit more reading involved when you get to worksheet two. And then by worksheet three, they're getting to more challenging problems mixed with the basic, and then even taking notes of things that they haven't seen quite exactly. So, quite a bit of mixture with the worksheets. Um, while I'm in here and don't lose my place, this is what a quiz would look like for this topic. It is pretty basic stuff, but yet at the same time does bring in some of the more quality problems and ones that take a little bit more thought, but it's two-sided, seven questions. One topic, that's their quiz, they know what's coming up because I tell them, "Your quiz is on parallel lines this day." So, and if you can see at the schedule, we started here, the investigation probably happened even before semester two started, and then we're not quizzing on it until down here and we should be ready for it. Okay, non-routine problems are not a favorite because they're hard. There is no one way to do them, I throw a problem at them, I haven't taught it to them and it's like, "Here, you get five minutes, don't give up on it." They look at it, "I give up." No, you don't get to give up, you have to work for five minutes, so it really does work on perseverance, which a lot of kids are very weak at. And they're super excited when they get them right because it's few and far between sometimes. And, beginning of the year, it really surprised me, the kids that were getting them right versus not getting them right. The kids that find this class easy, I give them these problems over and over and over and I'm like, "Then work on these, if you think that this is easy, then work on this pen, you need to work on this scope." CER problems, I can't report too much on yet because we're getting into a second semester, but there's story problems that we break down and we like back up why we want to back them up the way we do the one that I'm in. Quizzes versus benchmark, um, quizzes, single topics, retakes are available to anyone and everyone. So, if you got a 99% on your test and you want 100, okay, fine. You can take a retake, but you're getting that retake great, so I hope you get 100. Okay? Now, the other flip side of this, if they score lower than a 70, it goes in as a zero, which I thought I was gonna get a lot of parent feedback on that, and I surprisingly did not. I got a lot more support than anything else. So, um, it goes in as a zero and then that kind of pushes them to come in and do that retake, especially for those students who are just like, "You know, I'm okay with the 50", and then we all know where that grade eventually goes. So, this is kind of, yes, padding their grade a little bit, but at the same time, we all know math and we all know that it snowballs and accumulates and what's, you know, here you still have to know there. So if they don't know a topic well enough, should they really be moving on to other topics? So, it makes them get that cleared up real quick. Um, benchmark tests are their big test, they do four of them, it is cumulative, so it's all the stuff we've learned all year, it's multiple choice. Um, they're usually not stellar grades, but it does give them an idea of what multiple choice is like, so kind of like ACT style kind of thing. Alright, there's a lot there. This is my first policy, this is feedback.
So, what happens to the zero then if they get a 75 on the next one?
They get the 75 from the zero, I put it in the comments, like originally, they got a 42. The retake, they got a 75 and the 75 goes in. Now, I don't know if I should be saying this because I'm on camera, but at the end of the quarter, if that zero is still a zero, I will go back and give it the lowest grade, that, or that grade that it really was. So, that comment that says, "I'm not really giving credit where credit's deserved", I do it, but not till like the last day. So I make them think like, "Hey, you gotta do it."
I'm asking if they didn't do the retake, they're probably ever gonna watch the board meeting video.
I think I have to use my phone now. And then, like, a huge thing that I hear from kids all the time is, "I have test anxiety, I have test anxiety." Okay, legitimately, there are some cases out there, but again, 13 years of teaching, there aren't tons, it's usually because they're not really prepared for the test. So, that last comment I really liked, because just going into a quiz knowing that that's not the end and that you have another shot, they freak out way less. Like, I never hear anyone like, "Oh man, we have a quiz, I gotta go to the bathroom", you know, anything like that, so it's a very, very relaxed setting, so... Alright, so I'm pretty much done here, I'm just wrapping it up. Um, so, I had two students fail last year who are in this new curriculum now. So, one of the students said the first comment, that they failed last year and they like this a lot more. Um, and this particular student is pulling close to 100%. Um, overwhelming comments about loving not having a book, as I'm sure you can all imagine, just one less textbook in your back. Um, sometimes it feels too easy, so then with those types of students, I will give them those non-routine problems, or I'll give them the problems that, "Oh, well, you scored kind of low in this category, maybe we should look at doing a retake on this one." So, I got feedback from teachers, um, I have Heather in my class, who is a special education teacher. She's both in the math lab and one of the regular classes, so I did want some of her feedback. She loves the routine of it, so, no matter what kind of kid you are, you can really benefit from the routine of this curriculum. Pace is good for both regular and spec ed kids, so that was really nice to hear, especially with, it's fast-paced actually, and lots of transitions, and usually that's not the best. So, um, the one downfall, so many papers. Like, I am amazed though that they are not losing them left and right, to tell you the truth. Like, they've got a mental math packet, a slot packet, notes, worksheets, like all at the same time that they have to keep track of, and I barely have anyone lose anything. Even the kids that, you know, it comes in where it should get ironed. So, um, answer key, right now, the curriculum writers are not letting us like put it out there on Google Classroom or like anywhere, so the only way that my kids can see the answer key is in the classroom, and a lot of them, you know, just want that check-in and so that's one of the downfalls at least that we have right now. Um, daily correcting, I'm going crazy. Like, I have no idea how to get them that great feedback on those worksheets without correcting them, but I'm going crazy correcting them. And, again, I'll throw in papers, copies all the time, I spend like hours in the copy room just doing copies. Um, routines with lots of transitions, participation is outrageous, like it's phenomenal. And, we use every minute of the class period, which you cannot save for a lot of classes, and I would say I was probably very guilty of that in the class too. Every single minute, bell-to-bell is used. So, I think that would be the line.
Question on your copy?
Yes.
Is there anything that can be done electronically for the kids? Could they like come to the form?
So, as of right now, they're not allowing us to like them out electronically and they should reform, so that is the downfall. Because, yeah, I wanted to put it on Google Classroom, I wanted to be able to like put the worksheets up for kids missing and the answer key and all that, and we had that, that direct question and we weren't allowed, what was the answer, not at this point?
Not at this point.
Yeah, not at this point, so... So, not that it's not gonna happen, but I just want to know.
To add to your question, the electronic version is also a little bit tricky now because we wanted to be able to write and they kind of like type like your, Google Doc or whatever it is not, you have to do, so...
You can't really show your work.
Yeah.
So it sounds like it's really positive for kids, students, but more cumbersome.
It is, but honestly, I am loving it. Like, even though I spend a lot more time with it, I am absolutely loving it.
Loving to see the results.
Both, all of it.
Yeah, all of it.
I like the speed, I like how the topics flow, I like how they're learning it, I like how they're retaining it, I like just going back to like some of the basic stuff and making sure that they're comfortable with it, and you know, like, they shouldn't feel at ninth grade level that they can't do percents, I mean, there's probably a lot of us in the room that can't do that kind of stuff and, you know, like, we shouldn't feel that way about basic stuff. So, just bringing them back to the ground sometimes helps.
So, what do you think about getting a student system?
Next year, they're already signed up and ready to go. I think I have one each semester, not two, and I think you have some as well, so yep.
Awesome.
Yep. We just had to, you know, make sure they're good at copies.
So there's actually seems to be like a lot of, not redundancy, but kind of redundancy, I mean, do they chew on it, deal with it, come back and chew on it, I like that approach.
Yeah, and like the same vocabulary comes up, you know, like over and over and over and sometimes that's what the kid needs.
Yeah, yeah, that's cool.
And then teaching the upper level classes, what I noticed is, the biggest stumbling block for students is not the fact that they're in a pre-cap class or that they are a calculus class, it's because they don't know the stuff that we'll be covering in lab one two.
Sure, sure.
It's because those are the things they keep stumbling on, they can't like...
And then I'll have like Algebra II kids, so our old curriculum, they'll come in, you know, and visit, and I'll have my warm-up up, and I'll just see them reading, and be like, "You wanna try it?" So it's like, we're doing stuff that seems basic, but yet they can't do it, if they haven't been taught it, so... Yep.
Awesome.
Any other questions for Jamie? If not, I just want to thank you, Colton, the department, Dale, Liz, the team, basically, for your willingness to do this, and if the board remembers, this went back to trying to more closely align our curriculum with the college and career readiness standards for the ACT. Other districts that have done this for years have documented kind of research, practical research evidence of helping raise ACT scores for their students, so for us, it really came back to that effort, so I applaud you guys for your willingness to do this and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Don't jinx that computer.
I don't think anyone's gonna do anything. I'll just let you log out and do what you can with your...
Oh, thank you.
She wants some more.
Man away tonight. Jim Seddon.
Hold your breath.
Hello again, thank you for letting us present tonight. First time we were here was actually in 2017, believe it or not. So, just a quick review, recap, we are, two seconds, I know we've talked enough and you kind of know who we are, but just a little reminder, then we'll get into some of the things that we want to present tonight. So, we've been around since 1998, K-12 schools are our main focus. Over 400 projects, a billion dollars in project value, 200 full-time employees, mostly all we do is K-12 schools, that's what we do. Just some of the schools around here that we've worked with, Southboster, Greensburg, Milwaukee Public Schools, just some of them that we talked about. How we got here, right, again, from 2017, we've, we've done one full project, we're in the middle of doing the lights here in the old school, I think it looked pretty nice. Um, and again, you can remember the barn door we did, that was a big hit. And actually show that to a lot of other schools and they love it, because a lot of other schools are getting into ag and tech and things like that, so kudos to you guys, that's a great, great idea. Uh, who we are, we have an integrated team approach, so we have architects, engineers, project managers, estimators, field superintendents, control staff, referendum specialists, entire marketing division, all under one umbrella to here to help your school. In the traditional way, you usually have a school district, then architect, construction manager, architect hires engineer, construction manager hires some mechanical or different subs, um, a lot of different layers of markup, uh, a lot of self-performing work, and what do I mean by that? So, if the construction manager, let's say I'm the construction manager, I say, "I'm gonna self-perform work, which means I'm gonna do the cement in this new school we're putting in", right? Okay, how do you know if you're getting a good price from that? Well, I'm gonna go get bid. Okay, who's gonna bid against me knowing that I'm doing work, I'm self-performing? And if I do, it's gonna be a high number. So, that's the issue with self-performing work, as the owner, you never know if you're gonna get a good price on it or not, okay? Also, you get caught in the middle pointing fingers, right? Uh, the architect's gonna design it, construction manager's gonna put it in, there's a problem and they say, "Well, it's not my problem, I designed it right, he didn't do it right." "No, he designed it wrong", and you, the school, get stuck right in the middle. That can take weeks upon weeks upon weeks, change order on change order on change order, trying to get your project, just gets delayed and makes its over budget. We got a flat structure that I talked about a lot, um, our subs don't have subs, our subs don't buy equipment, uh, which saves you, the school district, a lot of money in markets. Big thing that, that we found in a lot of schools is the maximum participation of local trades. So, we're not a traditional CM where we bring along our guys and we come in and we do the job, right? We're gonna bid it out, we bid out every single category and we bid it out to people that you want to bid out, and people you don't want to bid out. So if there's subs out there that you work with that are very good and they'll say, you know, "Don't, I don't want them in my school again", we don't put them on the list, so the little bid can't win, right, because they're not either. Also, we bring in local guys, so let's say they're a big boosters of yours in your, in your, in the sports community or whatever they do, and they're an HVA C guy, but they can't do a million dollars worth of work that's part of this project, they can do a couple hundred thousand. So let them to the boiler, let them put the new boilers in the school and let the big HVAC above them do all the rest of the work. So it just helps out the school. We've done that multiple, multiple times and it just seems to work out very well. So, uh, we're asked to give three options, uh, when it comes to designing what you guys are looking for, right? First one was renovate all the schools. So you have your two elementaries and I think maybe maybe we'll talk about your high school. So I wanna renovate those. I wanna bring them up to speed. Elementaries are kind of old if you look in there. What's it gonna cost me or what, what's involved in bringing these up to make it a two thousand, twenty twenty, uh, school, right? So if you're gonna renovate the elementary schools, some things we put in, new entrances, new additional parking, a complete remodel, which is all new paint, flooring, carpeting, ceilings, the works. Uh, all MEP upgrades, which is mechanical, electrical plumbing, uh, so when your air handlers, boilers, things of that nature. Uh, kitchen restroom upgrades, roofing always an issue, uh, new controls, LED lighting, fire alarm upgrade, just to name a few. So that's a lot of stuff. Right? If you wanna bring this up to twenty twenty. Uh, in the high school, some things that we've seen and some things, Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce some. Mike, that's our project manager. Jason, right, our architect. I apologize. I should have introduced him sooner. Uh, Mike's found walking around with Bill, um, while we're doing the lighting fight. There's a lot of things that we didn't notice in the beginning, two thousand seventeen, maybe two thousand eighteen, maybe seen, right? You know, these need to be upgraded and the teachers feel that way and administrations seem to feel that way. So a couple of things are, this would be included in the renovation would be the MEP equipment replacement upgrades. That's all the mechanical, electrical plumbing, that's the air handlers, the unit beds in the classroom, we'd make them vertical units, uh, any of the chillers, things of that nature. Uh, the heating and cooling restroom upgrades, make them MDA compliant. Putting in new ceilings and floors. A lot of the floors don't transition well in some of the areas. So we put new flooring in. Um, upgrade the finishes, the paint, things of that nature. Bring the high school up a little bit. Uh, the second option, uh, that we talked about was to build an addition to the high school and create one main campus. So this has been talked about a lot, right? Now, let me start out by saying, whatever we show you here, I can guarantee you it's not gonna be the final thing, right? We have limited now about what your expectations are, what you want, but we haven't talked to the community really. We haven't talked to the board. And specifically individual ideas, a design team if you have one. Uh, so it'd be good, that gets moving down the road, right? If this starts snowballing, then, then you get the community engagement meetings going, you get the design team, you get the board, you get the community in here. What do you want? What exactly do you want? This is something that we gave you that will work, but we're not sure if this is what you want, right? So here's your current. Current, uh, high school, middle school. This is where we proposed to put the addition. There you can see it a little better in orange, right? Now, there's a lot of things that go into this, not just slapping up an orange picture and that's good. You gotta think of site work, drainage, uh, drop-off, pickup, uh, more people here. So now you have two schools, you're bringing in to one, school bus drop-offs. Uh, element, uh, pre-K kids, the moms have to walk their kids in, right? Different entrances, things like that. So. We've come up with a lot of different ideas. We added some parking down here, uh, cut the parking here. I know parking is always a premium, right? Uh, I think we had a little parking here. The drop-off we changed to bring the school buses around. Here's a little, little detail, more detailed view of that. I think Mike's got that picture too. We can leave those with you as well. So you have some drop-off area here with the school buses in elementary and then they can come back down and drop off. You have some parking spots here where they can cross and bring them in, right, Jason? You can take over if you want.
Yeah. So the idea is that the, um, the little kids' parents will come in and they'll be able to park here, along here and then safely navigate across to the main entrance for the elementary school. But we still need to have, uh, a, a, a good spot for the school buses to drop off. I think the idea would be is that the, the younger grades would sit in front of the bus, the bus driver could come in and drop those, um, students off first. And then they'd be able to continue on around to your main, um, drop-off over here for the middle school and high school. Um, this blue line here I'm showing is, um, how the drainage pattern is working right now. And this is a signifying a large culvert that takes the water from the field over to next to your, um, next to your base or your sports field over here. And then, um, it comes back and drains into here to this drainage well before it gets way off the property. We will probably have to, uh, be creative with our site work and be able to maybe extend the pipe out past the, past the addition so that it doesn't conflict with your building, um, in the building, a construction process. Uh, also, I just also show some, some, a good spot for the, um, elementary school playground might be in the back, in the back, backside there.
So this is something we showed you way in the beginning. This was our first draft at what the school should look like. What type of classrooms, a gym, cafeteria, that type thing. The entrance is here. Um, after speaking with Jordan and, and getting some ideas from other people, it seemed like you needed more classrooms, right? And more space. So we're gonna kind of give you the, this is another look at it where we're adding classrooms. Why don't you take them through kind of the building, what it would look like?
Sure. The, uh, main entrance over here, um, the main, um, administration portion is right where you come in. Here's a, the idea, here's a conference room that you could actually funnel people in from, from, uh, for an outside meeting into a conference room where you don't have to give them access to the entire building. Um, and then up at the top is the reception and security area. Somebody would have to enter the building and go through the check-in before they enter your, enter your school. So it's a secure entry. Then your, your main, um, administration portion down here be the closest, uh, proximity for your early childhood and your pre-K. Um, this courtyard will be created so that we don't take away from the natural light of the existing middle school, um, classrooms. But it might be a nice thing to be able to have this courtyard used by the, um, kindergarten, pre-K and, um, early childhood during the warmer days. Um, every classroom, uh, every class has three classrooms and then a shared flex space. So if you have a class size that is greater than seventy-five students, you have to get that extra classroom. This can follow, this can follow the, the class as it goes through the, um, through the elementary school. So first grade, seventh grade, here's a, a second, third grade flex space, third grade to fourth grade, the fourth and fifth grade spec, uh, flex space. And then the fifth grade here. And then there's, um, six special education rooms. We, um, identified there might be a need for that.
Now, if that's too many, that's too many. But when we talked and we thought maybe that's what the teachers need. And again, we're not sure.
I have double, uh, double, um, gym for your gym instruction. That way you can have multiple sessions of gym being taught at the same time.
These are the restrooms, correct?
And then INC cafeteria, uh, large music and large art room. Here's your mechanical, um, main mechanical, centrally located plant with, uh, with the fire pumping and everything located in one spot.
Questions?
Just to visually, I wanna make sure we're on the same page. Here we are. I wanna make sure everybody else is too. So I mean, the end of the existing hallway down here and the, the end of the middle school is where then that new entrance would be built on.
Yes.
To the edge. And that would then become the drop-off office location for the K five addition, correct?
Right, right. And almost, um, how you originally had your.
That drive around.
That drive around, um, almost, almost putting it back in the same spot.
I just wanted to make sure from a visual standpoint, if people understood where we were talking about on the grounds.
We're, we're right. We're here right now. And this is the, this is the, uh, furthest northeast entrance.
So there'd be two lanes, for, for example, car drop-off then, one dedicated to bus lane and, and two car lanes, right?
You can do that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You would, you would make sure your buses, you know, when the buses pull in.
Right.
They pull in as close as they can to the bus in front of them, drop their kids off and wait until the bus clears out in front of them and they continue, continue down to the, to the entrance.
Now, we know this would be huge to have a stoplight here, right? We have some lobbyists, we're working on it. It's a long haul and we're checking into it. Um, just so you know. Cause it would be nice to have. Um, the other thing we're talking about is equity. We're talking about anything over here possibly, you know?
Again, this is, these are all discussions that we would be having.
Potentially have the middle school, high schoolers operationally exit out that other entrance, you know, maybe get an extra lane in there, a turn lane in there to help with the flow. The middle school and high school being on this side, the elementary school on this side, trying to segregate that a little bit more to certain extent.
Questions on this? It's our first pass, first idea. That's kind of what it can look like. So it'd match up nicely with what you have.
So this is a bit off topic, but so you said Reesburg and I was literally just there on Saturday at a new elementary school. That's what you guys built?
No, we did all the MEP work. Uh, I know who built that and I'll show you. I have the pricing on that actually.
Oh, okay.
So we did a project alongside, uh, that was Kramer Brothers, um, they did the project there. We did all the MEP and, uh, some design work alongside them in their high school and a couple of other in their, um, middle school.
Yeah, two other elementary schools. Um, we did their, some upgrades, some boilers in their high school. We upgraded a lot of the mechanical, but.
So the other thing we talked about in option three was adding a performance arts center and a fitness center, right? It's, it's as neat as a wish. I don't know. Uh, you know, but it's out there, right? So where can we put that? Here's your regular school, like we talked about. There, this is the addition that we spoke of. That can be where your performing arts center goes. Why do we put it there, Jason?
For a couple of reasons. Right now, your, your main community events with your basketball and stuff, uh, are entering over here and, um, this is the main location for that. If you were to, if you were to put that originally.
Originally.
A couple of years ago, we, we put it down here and it probably would have taken away a lot from the parking and made it a lot more difficult. Plus you're kind of orphaning a community centered, centered piece of the program from, from the, uh, another piece that's also a community centered program with the, with the gym and the, when your main basketball and events and stuff are, they're, they're coming to this end of the building. So to kind of cluster this would make more sense to keep it, um, more of a, more of a knit hub for, for your community events, including the, the fitness center. If you add the fitness center, this would be a nice spot for that. You could actually, we could, we could, you could put that over here or you could probably fill it in here. Um, there's multiple options. But, but the idea is that you would, you would keep those particular pieces that the community is using close together so that, so that it seems like it's, it's part of the destination for them to, to come to.
And we've done fitness centers like this where these are all glass outside, so you can see outside and it's kind of nice when the community gets to come in and use it. We were just, uh, at the show, we were with the school district at one of our receptions and I, we just, in Southwestern, we did a fitness center just like this. I said, now that it's done, how, how often is it getting used? Right? Is it, eh, they're getting thirty to forty people per day, uh, from the community just to use it. And I thought that's a pretty good number, you know? Now, a lot of them are the same people every day working out. It's pretty great. Still, it's a good, pretty good number. Okay, cost estimates. So this is some of the things I found in Wisconsin recently. And how much did it cost? And how much per square footage? So you know what kind of ballpark you're in. So first one, Southwestern, that's what we did. Just the new construction alone, uh, was about two hundred and thirty-two dollars a square foot. Uh, party villa, new auditorium addition. And all this stuff is online. You can take a look. So these numbers are online. Uh, eight million, two sixty-five or about two sixty-three a square foot. Pittsville, uh, they're going for referendum right now in April for a new tech ed building at, uh, six million, four hundred, two fifty-six a square foot all in. Reesburg that you were talking about, so something interesting on this, you may look at that and go, that's not the right number. Well, since I did, we did projects with them and we're close to the business manager, it started out to be twenty-four million. Uh, and then they went over about four million. So this was the total number that it came in at the end. So they, they started out right around two forty a square foot. And then, uh, there was a couple of meetings and like I said, everything's online. You can check it out. They kind of rolled their budget by two to four million bucks. Right? This is one, this is a merril point. This is an imper referendum of last year they lost. But it's got all the information on here. It's, it's kind of good stuff. Just again, for comparison, this is all your site work. Um, two, three, new elementary school construction costs, seventy-two thousand square feet, two hundred bucks a square foot for fourteen million. Okay. It's two hundred bucks a square foot, but that doesn't include anything. That doesn't include construction management fees. It doesn't include architect, engineering. It doesn't include anything. Uh, allowances, um, basically furnishings, things like that. So then here you got contingency, architect, engineering for nine ninety, uh, total project cost of nineteen five. So what I did here, just to make sure we're kind of apples to apples, um, I took out this allowances, this nine hundred and twenty thousand cause it's furniture and miscellaneous items. I don't wanna put that in for square footage. I should put a few on that. Uh, that came to eighteen five eighty and a CM is usually anywhere between two and four percent is what it's gonna cost you. Or five. Uh, I put it at three. So in a total of nineteen, one through seven, that's about two sixty-five a square foot. Makes sense? Questions? I just wanna give you an average, what's out there. Um, I'm sure there's a lot more there, higher, lower. This is kind of what was public when I, when I was seeing recently. So our cost estimates, uh, for option one, if we're renovating both elementaries and the high school, uh, we're in total of twenty-five, four one, two, five, seven, nine. So the two elementary schools renovation is twenty million, three, six, seven. And the high school is right around five. Um, again, that high school number can be higher, it can be lower. I don't think it can be much higher. We're, we're pretty solid on that. But it can be lower. Let's say you don't wanna do the ceilings. We don't wanna do, this is stuff that we've seen that we think should be done, right, right? Uh, option two, the addition to the high school, uh, twenty million, five oh two, the site work and miscellaneous, which includes, um, furniture, uh, cameras. I mean miscellaneous items that you're gonna need for a new school. One million, four twenty-one, high school renovation, again, five, same numbers here. Option three, the theater and fitness center together would be eight, six, eight million, six hundred thousand. Uh, what I did here is I took out the four hundred and twenty-one, cause that's kind of what we did for, um, the other one. When we're using furniture and stuff, that's about what the cost would be. And so I just put our site work at a million bucks and it came out to two hundred and forty-seven a square foot. So we're right in line, a little lower than most people out there. Um, again, these are budgets. We're pretty solid on your questions though. Um. Questions on this?
What did the, um, what did the addition end up getting? Do you want to see them back and put the feedback in the classroom? What did you want to give the most part of that addition?
Yeah, it added a good, it added a good ten thousand square feet with the extra.
Eighty-six thousand, seven fifty. So let's add in all the classrooms. Um, again, are you gonna need them all? That's all, that's I think the most you're ever gonna need. So we wanna keep it high, make sure you don't outgrow, you don't wanna put something in and you start growing and you go, why did we do that? Why don't we put in three more classrooms? It's not that hard. We put them right there. So, um, like Jordan said, we, we kind of budgeted on the high side for classrooms. The gym's good size, double gym cafeteria's good size, everything's a good size. So, uh.
Can we just say there's a, help me understand the furnishings part of that whole thing? That's without, the two forty-seven is without any kind of furnishings. Typically, what, what percentage?
So it depends on the school. We usually, we're right around five hundred thousand dollars, between four and five hundred thousand dollars for an elementary school. Um, now, if you're going way above and beyond furnishings, it depends what you want. Your basic furnishings, your desks, your tables, your chairs, your teacher's cabin, I mean, everything. Anything you would need to bring your school together. That's about it. Um, now for talking multiple flat screens, if you're talking about.
Right, right.
That's kind of our.
And then did the, uh, theater as well? May help me with that a little bit. What size is that? I mean, what, what would that show as far as?
I think I had a seating capacity right now. We're buying three twenty.
Jason, I think I had a seating capacity right now, we're buying three-twenty.
Some are bigger with five hundred seat capacity, which is big.
What is our capacity now then? What are we, what are we jamming in the cafeteria?
I would be curious what the one-up and sock is, because I've been there before. Anybody know what the seating is there?
I'll tell you, because every time I go in, I say, "Oh..."
I can look that up.
Four or something, four fifty maybe?
I don't even know what that is.
I don't think it's that big.
When they have those dance halls, they're sold off like that.
Oh, yeah. There's really not a lot of room like up and, up on top there.
They range from three to five hundred.
We put in an orchestra area for your, your band and have ample backstage for, yeah.
Now, we can get a little more detailed on that if you like pictures of that thing.
I was just curious compared to, yeah, compared to the cafeteria now that we have, you know, any, any...
I would say two hundred.
Two hundred.
Hundred fifty, two hundred. I think to me, though, what we agree is just having been through a renovation where we added an auditorium space, I mean, to me, we want a minimum of four hundred. Because if you're going to do an elementary assembly or a middle school, high school assembly, the last thing we want to do is go in here, do auditorium and not be able to get your stuff in there. So, to me, I thought that we're right around four hundred at each level. The K-five-six-four level, I mean, yeah, four hundred to me would kind of be a minimal benchmark coming into this.
I know Cambridge is doing one, a five hundred one for nine, they're going out for a referendum next April for nine point nine.
It's five hundred and stuff.
Four ninety-two, it says the website.
That's why it's always a five hundred.
Eighteen more than five hundred.
Overachievers!
And how, how many schools you guys built? You said in Indiana, where you built?
Forty to fifty referendums.
So, that's kind of where you know, if you say like, "We want, you know, auditorium" or whatever it's going to be, you kind of are like, "Well, we kind of pretty much know about where it's..."
We, we've had, this is, this includes escalations for twenty twenty-one construction.
So, can you finger bigger theater in the option?
Yeah, there's room. I think there's room to go further to the east. And, you know, you could actually reconfigure and put the, put the turret, you can turn it this way and use this space here for, for the auditorium too. And then, you know, flip it around. It's, the best spot on your site for that kind of expansion is, is right that corner of the, of the, by the gym. Without taking away from any daylighting from your current classrooms.
Can you go back to the little more detailed plan of the addition? Curious for the interior, like the rooms that are butted up to like up exactly right there?
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
What would you do for those on daylight?
Well, you could do a couple of things, actually. Right now, I have a large, large window space cut out so that there's, there's at least window glass. But one feature that you have on your middle school that is actually kind of nice is that, that clear story ban that you have. And you could actually do that, you could actually wrap that above, above the toilet rooms and get some clear story lighting in that condition or that situation.
Yeah, we could butt it out more, cut it more square footage, more money.
No, yeah, I just, I know that would be the first question a teacher has, like a cabinet problem.
And the other thing that I didn't talk about, which is possible that we can in a lot of schools, is since this is a new building, your roof's going to be new, we're going to structurally handle it. You can put solar in there, which will take away most of your electricity needs. So, we just finished up a solar project in Quanico. Another option, a lot of stuff we can do.
Other thing you could do, I've seen, is you could have clear story along the perimeter of your corridor and then have borrowed light into, from the corridors, like you have some of your high school now, you have the borrowed light. Some of them are blocked up and there's, there's artwork and stuff in it, but, but...
It's a nice word.
You can have borrowed light, borrowed light come in and it's not direct sunlight, but it's, it's, it's actual, natural light that comes in. Be creative with, you know, surfaces that you, on the opposite side of the corridor that would be like bright surfaces to, to bounce light into the classrooms that way too. That's also a strategy.
There's really a dialogue and, you know, if we get going, we can have, this is like like ten minutes, five minutes, and we're to come up with like really five, pretty really good ideas, how to continue to tweak this, but that's like engagement surveys and discussions and everything else. You can really get this design fine tuned and kind of get it to where hopefully, maybe not everybody's happy at the end of the day, because everybody's, a lot of times wants something, but hopefully, most everybody's happy and it's really, you can say it's the right facility they got.
Jim, we talked to the reception a little bit. And I went to, I think I mentioned the, the Epstein-Uwein presentation on some of the things they've been doing. One of the things that impressed me about what they mentioned, and again, I'm sure maybe you've done it, but instead of taking a look at that dedicated cafeteria space as cafeteria space, to actually plan for an educational space and, by the way, we use it for two hours a day for, for lunches. You know what I mean? Have you done that kind of thing before?
Especially that elementary.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
Well, we've used it for that education space and for community space.
Right.
Right? For whether the jazz or science or bridge, clay, you know, whatever you can use it for, you bring it for use, but yeah, education as well, right?
Sure.
Yep.
Because you're right, and that's where it's headed, because you're only using it a couple of days.
Exactly. It's really kind of a waste of space, you know?
That was the one piece in this, I know this was a sidebar conversation with somebody, but with the gymnasium and wanting to have, I mean, really the need to have two full courts available, so if this ever were to happen, we're not giving up gym space for the community. But most of those needs exist after we're done with the school day. I mean, realistically, during the school day, one gym in the K-five school, one court would be sufficient right now, because we have one finance teacher, but we're running one finance class. It's more for the after hours that we need additional court space. So, I do see that as a possibility, if you talk about potentially dual-use space, depending what that floor looks like, depending what type of divider gets put up in the center. That could be a way to maximize space, because from eleven AM to one PM, when the kids are getting certain lunch, the community's not going to be using that half of the gym. So, I just...
Especially a lot of, a lot of...
So, just as an idea, I mean, I've seen a few of the other new elementaries, even in Dane County, which some of them are incredible, but even them, like the floor, a lot of them don't have your traditional hardwood basketball gym. It's a more of a multi-purpose floor in an elementary gym. So, I mean, if half of the gym space was a multi-purpose floor, the other half was hardwood, that could be another idea to maximize all the space, so you're not, yeah, having a whatever, three thousand, four thousand square foot cafeteria that gets used two hours a day.
Just a reminder, how you get there? You've got to get to the referendum. You've got to pass that, and this means anything, right? So, we have you, the school district, community, our consultants, our marketing team, our community engagement specialist, everyone working together as a team, and we're partners. So, this is a long haul. So, we like to say that we're partners with the school district. That's why we, we like to only do three or four of these big jobs in a year, so that we can concentrate on partnering with the district instead of a lot of firms doing three or forty. And if we do three or four, that's a hundred and twenty million, a hundred and forty million. If you're doing thirty or forty, that's a lot. You get stretched out really thin and we just hear from a lot of school districts that aren't getting taken care of. And especially on a big project like this, you want all your horses there. Just a timeline for when you should start attacking the referendum. And if you're going to go in November, we're, we're getting there. This is in more detail. Again, single source accountability, we're trusted partners, state choice. You get the best bang for your buck and I have, all my customers tell me that, you can call any one of them. Man, we got a lot for that. And it's because of the no markets. You get your best bang for your buck. Guarantee no change orders. Again, we have our whole marketing team, reference support to help you. And you got Mike?
He actually has some marketing.
Oh, yeah.
So, this might be a bit of a stupid question, but don't guys just build schools or do you know other?
We do other things too. So, just a little background, our main bread and butter is building, designing schools, right? But we also are an energy savings company. So, in Wisconsin, when Act Thirty-two became really popular, it was all mechanical energy savings work, that's where we did most of our work. When that went away, we went back to our bread and butter, which is the referendums and designing and building schools. And that takes two, since two thousand and seven, it takes two to three years to build that with a school. So, that's kind of how we moved through Wisconsin.
We also do some municipal work in, I know in Indiana, they've, they've been working into the prison market. So, I mean, there's, and multiple stuff. I've got experience in, in housing and, and the entertainment center of the district too, so...
For the most part, school is kind of your core.
Yeah. I'd say ninety-five, ninety-three percent.
Do you think it'd be required to have a stoplight out there with the traffic? We could still get, manage the flow with that many more vehicles coming in?
I think so. And the other question, can you ask, could you have stagger times? Fifteen minutes? That's what a lot of schools are doing. Where are you staggered?
We try to get a stoplight out there a lot of times. What you have to do is you have to do a survey done, and so they come out and they put those black hoes across it and they mark it out. And then they basically tell you that what seven, what is it, seventy or eighty percent of the traffic, wherever speed they're going, that's what the speed limit needs to be, I guess. So, they do not want to bottleneck the speed at all.
Right. I suppose that's going to be roughly.
Does it, does the speed, the speed limit drop down as you approach the school? Or is it still seventy-five?
It's forty-five in its own.
But it's not required.
That's right, it's on the signs.
It's just, yeah, I agree with that.
Or a guideline.
Which is late.
Not white.
It's not an actual, right? I'm not really like, I don't know.
Why? This is like a jail.
So, that, that's, that's why, that's why we're watching this at the time, because we said, "Well, look, you guys can't tell us, we can't do anything. We have to do something." So, they gave the appearance, they gave the influence, they asked you to, legally,
Jordan, can you shed some light on maybe like where we are with the next steps overall in this process? Like, you know, school perception and the survey, I think, is around the corner, kind of where we're looking at, I guess, influencing those questions, if we're ready, when that's going to go out to kind of bring this full circle with the two companies that we have and whatnot.
Yeah, well, I think in terms of the survey, I've, I've talked to school perceptions multiple times again this year, just in preparation, but really knowing where we're at or where we're not at, quite frankly. To me, the survey is, is definitely going to happen, but it's a matter of when. And I won't make that decision. I'll let you guys, as the board, make that decision. I mean, it's easy for me to say, but I, I think realistically, you know, we, instead of wanting to do that in late February or March, I think we can still get there, because Performance Services and then Gray and Wayard, you've heard from as well, I mean, they've done enough late work and they know there's kind of a deadline in a couple of weeks and we need to have the best information possible, because clearly, once we put that out, whatever we put out in terms of dollars and whatever we put out in terms of scope of project, we want that to be as close to reality as possible. So...
And so, as far as the questions go, have those been somewhat figured out or is that on our person and you talk about it and deliver?
No, I mean, I would say the questions really will be, a first gloss at questions will be from school perceptions, but then those questions will be directly tied, obviously, to the projects and the dollar amounts and things like that. I mean, I don't know if there's other things that people are wanting to ask other than quite specific to the possibility of facilities work. I could certainly request like just a generic draft, if you will, from them. But I guess, to me, if this all went ideal, we'd have kind of a decision on what direction at the very least we felt we were going in terms of dollar amount and a decent idea on what that looks like in terms of rendition, so we could have something to put on the survey. And like I said, if we had that by mid-February, I think we could still hit that target of trying to get a survey out in March. And that mean, that won't put us in a position where this, like, can't be done, or even if the survey went out in mid-March at the worst, based on the timelines that we have with the statutes, we're fine. It's just a matter of, does the board feel comfortable with that, which, once again, you guys will have to make that decision. But in terms of what we're required to do, we don't need to have a resolution until like August. So, it's not as though we're up against a wall today. And as we had as the sidebar at the convention, it was just like, at the end of the day, whatever it is that we put on that survey, we want to feel really good about that information, because we're basically asking for people to say yes or no. Are you willing to vote for this or not? So, it's kind of like, we want to rush to the altar just to hit a deadline and then regret that decision six months later, which, no, we don't. So, that was a really long answer to a very...
Well, I guess the, the next one would be, what is the expectation to get a contract signed between one or the other? Surely it's not, you know, one or the other has to know pretty soon to start the labor behind the marketing and the community engagement, so is there a timeline expectation on that?
Well, I mean, that would be their question. My answer to that would be is, I mean, we're, we won't be signing anything until after we go to the survey.
Right.
And once we have the data from the survey, then we will know if we're even going to go down any path or not. But I would say most of the liquid, they've, they've put a lot of that already just to get us to this point, so they have enough skin in the game that they're not going to give up now.
So, March-ish?
Yeah, to me, that's, that's a realistic goal.
Anything else? Questions? Comments? No, my only comment is, obviously, you'll hear from me soon. And maybe put February tenth in your calendar. That's our next quarter meeting. Again, not set in stone, if you want to see other ideas or if you have, "Why can't we do this? Or why can't we do this? Or we need this many of this?" Let me know. We can put our team together and get to work, like you said, we can get to work on it right away, so. Appreciate your time.
All right, so, we're on to five point one, which is Board President. So, normally, I'm not selfish in this, but I guess tonight, you know, we are going to be voting or not voting, but down below is Isaiah's resignation. I just wanted to take the time to say that when I first got on the board, he was very much a mentor for me. And so, I am a little bit saddened by his resignation, so I'll see you right back. All right, five point two, District Administrator.
Yeah, well, Andy's on the list, but as you can see, he's not in a crowd. He's got sick children, which I think a lot of people have sick children, spouses, whatever, right now, so I graciously excuse him for that reason. Uh, the one thing that he had in his report, though, that he wanted to make sure I mentioned to you, is, I don't know if he saw it or not, but he's reported in the past, he's been working on some middle school conference realignment, that has been approved, but it'll go into effect twenty-one oh two. So there's one more year, believe it or not, that's, that's only one year away. Yeah, so next year's already twenty twenty-one, and then twenty-one twenty-two, so... Just wanted to share that and probably thank Andy for his work. As far as I know, he was one of the founding fathers of that work, if you will, so appreciate his contribution, 'cause I think that's a positive for our kids in our district, so... So that's Andy's, uh, quick report. Cheryl or Liz, whoever wants to jump in next, feel free.
Okay. Um, you can see from my report, I haven't been here to report for a couple months, so it's a little bit more lengthy, but I was able to accomplish getting a bunch of claims done, so get some reimbursements coming in, and we did receive clarification that our four oh three B is compliant, so every year, they go through and ask us questions and have a send them information, and that came back all good. And in between doing my stuff, trying to hold the district office together, I'm helping have a transition of the HR position, so we're all working together and getting everything done. Middle school, high school, so my, um, I would like to say that my building's been healthy for January, but it really hasn't. So like, there's been a lot of coverage going on. Per Wong, we found in the beginning of January, there's some health issues, and so I stepped in and took over registration this year, and registered students for the twenty twenty-one school year. We did some course planning work, particularly with incoming freshmen and sophomores. I went back last week and did some floor planning with eighth grade freshmen. We talked about youth apprenticeship and start college now, early college credit program, and how you plan for those, and what kind of flexibility it requires and things like that. So it's been a busy month in regard to registration and helping students make those plans and understand the flexibility that's needed when you are registering for courses. So, you know, after, the week after we did that, then I got to play, as I like to call it, and actually, I named it Tim. And so that, that put me out for a few days, but, and then last week, we had a bevy of teachers who were out also with Tim to play, and so it's been kind of crazy, but second quarter, first semester ended Friday, January seventeenth. So we started the new semester, we had a few bumps in the road with our cursing college classes. Some, our timetables and our, don't necessarily match, so the cursing classes started two weeks earlier than our actual semester started, so we're playing some catch-up. So it's been a little dicey, but things have gotten better, and since that people step back from the ledge and are making it through. So, you know, we have hopes that things will come, come around and we'll be okay. Other than that, we've had a great start for second semester. And can't believe that we're already at the end of January, February and phase. So we'll be doing winter aspire testing next week to see where our students are in regard to not only their own achievement, but then also in regard to our CIP goal. So we're looking to see if we can move some students to proficiency, or either just up a little bit, and hopefully that'll be happening, 'cause we've been looking diligently on reading with all students. So it's been good, but yeah, halfway through the year, it's amazing.
Thank you. I just, um, hearing this is a report, both the content and the quality of her voice.
You know?
But how fortunate we are to have someone with Liz's skillset. Kurt's working through some stuff, what he's been working through for a while, and to have someone with Liz's experience as a former high school counselor and then assistant principal, who seamlessly was able to step in and basically run registration as a high school principal. Having been a high school principal, you can't underestimate the importance of high school registration and what that means to kids and their families. So I just wanna thank Liz for that, and she probably ran herself too hard, and here's the result, but, you know, saying in all seriousness, thank you for stepping up and doing that, 'cause that's a huge thing for our kids, so, thank you. Uh, just a couple meetings I'd like to touch on briefly. Lanay Trudeau from CISA Two is the liaison, if you will, that works with the new teacher project. So we've talked about the new teacher project.